I call the 2,432nd meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 within city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card on the table at the side there in City Hall or emailing OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may be emailed to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuyia et cetera treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. And then I'll move on to announcements. Join the downtown Milwaukee community this Friday, September 5th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. for the next First Friday event. Then on Saturday, the Milwaukee Environmental Stewards Group brings their Fourth Annual Sustainability Fair. The event includes local vendors, a trash and show, food, drinks, music, and kids' activities. The event takes place in the parking lot at Harrison Street and Main Street downtown where the farmers market is held on Sundays. Learn more at milwaukieesg.org. And I definitely recommend people go to their site to see what you can bring in to recycle or to trade or give away clothing. There's a clothing swap, there's a community warehouse, and Habitat for Humanity will take household goods to get them in the hands of new households, all kinds of things. So do check out their website, milwaukieesg.org. Join Metro at City Hall on Sunday, it's a packed weekend here, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to help shape and refine parks and nature projects in Milwaukee and other parts of Clackamas County. The project ideas that will be refined were submitted by community members during past nature and neighborhoods workshops. Conceptual projects will be voted on by community members beginning October 7th. The event includes free food, children's activities, and interpretation services in both Spanish and ASL. If you can't attend the workshop on September 7th, there will be another opportunity to participate during NCPRD's Fiesta Latina en El Parque event on Saturday, September 13th, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. The Fiesta Latina en El Parque is a free, family-friendly, community festival celebrating Latino heritage and culture and will be held at North Clackamas Park. I also got a piece of mail about an event I wanted to call out. Saint Stephen's Serbian Orthodox Church, which is over sort of behind Milwaukee High School on 27th Avenue, has every fall has a Serbian festival, and this week, this year, it's on the 13th and 14th of September. And they have music, they have food, you can learn about the Serbian culture. So I recommend people stop by the Serbian church and check out their cultural festival on September 13th and 14th.
Mayor, if I may, I've attended that, it's really a lot of fun.
I've heard that.
Yeah, I would suggest it's kind of not on the radar, but yeah, it's just they have music and dancing and all kinds of food and displays and that kind of thing. It's pretty informative, yeah.
Yeah, great, great. Anybody else with other events to announce? Okay, if not, for more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at milwaukie Oregon.gov or call 503-786-7555. And here's a haiku about the sustainability fair. Recycle, reuse, sustainability fair, Milwaukee gathers. I usually am at this point crying and pleading for people to submit haiku. I did get some lovely haikus submitted by a staff member recently. So I have a couple of meetings worth of haiku in the queue, but I'm always taking haiku contributions for future meetings, so please send me your haiku. All right, Constitution Week proclamation, are our presenters, they have not zoomed in?
Mayor Beatty, I did not see any of it from the Daughters of the American Revolution present, nope.
Okay, well, I'm sorry that they are not here with us. The Daughters of the American Revolution, you know, participate with our American Legion on a number of annual events, but this is kind of their own sort of flagship event that they do is the Constitution Week. It seems more important than ever to recognize that we have a constitution that calls on all of us to do certain things. So I guess I will read their proclamation in their, read the proclamation in their absence. Can you blow it up just a little? There we go, okay. Whereas we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America on September 17th, 1787. And whereas today, or well, September 17th will mark the 237th, 238th anniversary of the adoption of the constitution by a convention of the states. And whereas the constitution, as the foundation upon which our democracy is based, stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. And whereas exercising our ability to vote is a right, a responsibility, celebration, and also a way of protecting our constitutional rights. Now therefore, I, Lisa Beatty, mayor of the city of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week in the city of Milwaukee and do commend its observance by all citizens. Seems particularly apt to mark this week when we've heard recently of efforts to make it harder to vote and roll back access of people to the ballot, to the ballot box. So I think I'm happy to read this proclamation as we, yeah.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
Add something here? I'm a big believer in reading the basic documents as a reminder. And so I always read the city charter after the new year to make sure that that's fresh in my memory and that kind of thing. So I'm a kind of a believer in being a mayor with the basic documents. So I'd like to hand out something.
The constitution.
And it is the constitution of the United States. I'm sure our lawyer reads this a lot.
Have you seen women's pockets, they are not?
Well, they're, you know, my pockets are this big.
Oh, I might have pockets now.
This is something handy when, you know, your uncle starts selling off about the constitution and you can whip it out and you know what it really says.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's great, thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Actually, there's also an app for those of you that would like, that may not have access to this book. There's an app, I actually have it on my phone. So when I do have these discussions on constitutionality, I can show them which amendment we're referring to.
To, yeah.
So yeah, I appreciate Counselor Massey very much.
Well, the beauty of an app is you can do a word search. This one, you have to, you have to search for the word, but yeah, no, this is great.
Is there a way to get this proclamation to the White House's communication office? Because they need it a lot more than we do right now. I can send an email, thank you, please do, please, that'd be fantastic. CC me on that too.
Hey. All right, community comments. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community comments on city business items that are not on the agenda. Before we begin, is there follow-up from the August 19th comments, Ms. Sager?
Mayor, there was one comment made at that meeting from Mr. Cruz appreciating our middle housing town hall and saying many other things, including, you know, giving councillor, or council president Anderson all the credit for the amphitheater proposal in Milwaukee Bay Park. But I do not have any follow-up from that, no, and there's been no correspondence before this.
All right, thank you. I'm not seeing any yellow cards or any of the folks here wanting to comment. No hands being raised, okay, nobody online? Okay, well, if there's nobody wanting to make community comment, I will forego reading the rest of that script and go on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council, July 28th, 2025, middle housing town hall, August 5th, 2025 work session, and August 5th, 2025 regular session. Does any council member wish to remove a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I was reading my constitution book. I move to approve consent agenda as presented.
A second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. None heard, the consent agenda passes unanimously. And we move on to our first business item, which is the Milwaukee Station Food Cart Pod, presented by Assistant City Manager Joseph Rulio.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Joseph Rulio, Assistant City Manager. Here with an update about our food cart pot Milwaukee station and some things that have been happening that I think most of you are familiar with. But I'm going to go over some kind of brief, brief history and then go right into kind of the meatier part of the update for tonight. Thank you, Scott. So before we go into the conversation tonight, I wanted to share a little bit about the background for that property that ended up being Milwaukee Station as we see it today with the food cart pod. Because I wasn't familiar, I wasn't here back in 2011, and these are all taken from Google Street View. But I had never seen the lot in 2011 empty and that way. So I just wanted to show us, show you all how we got to where we are today. 2011 empty lot, in 2014, you start seeing some serious construction through the orange line coming into town. I'm sure the mayor might be the only one here that was maybe around, or Scott, sorry, I know you're there too, you step in George as well. But it was also, it was being used for construction staging and the construction for that orange line. In 2016, fast forward, there's, there's a little bit of rhyme and reason to the dates. But in 2016, the orange line is completed, and at that time, the city acquires that triangle property, that 8,600 square foot property that you see on gravel right there in the photo. It's during that time around the acquisition of that from Triment, the city starts having conversations with council as well as the community a little bit before that, in 2015, 2016, about the community had a desire for a food cart pod and to see something. And staff brought that to council, and council had discussion and approved, pursuing that idea through an RFP back in 2016 to find a potential property manager that would run a food cart pod. In 2016, there was two respondents to the RFP, one being the Johnson Group. The other one, I'm not sure if they stayed through the whole process or not, but I do know that there was at least two that applied. Johnson Group was awarded, and from 2017 to 2025, you know, to present day, Johnson Group has been managing that food cart pod in the city. There's, there is a few things, currently there is 12 carts on the property. And it's essentially at capacity just because it's a small lot. Even though our management agreement talks about between eight to 15 carts, well, this is pretty close to capacity. Currently, the Johnson Group continues to be the operator, 10 years. They've recently expressed an interest to sell the, sell the business and not renew the lease. They have, their current lease right now, which has been, which has been, it's extended multiple times over the last 10 years. Expires on November 30th, 2026. And so right now, we're talking with them as well as with you tonight to talk about like potential direction where the city would like to go with that property and with the Johnson Group. So to that, this is kind of the more the direct point to the meatier point of the conversation. Two kind of pathways, staff season, maybe there are more that we haven't fully explored, but as far as tonight, we kind of seen two pathways. So with the Johnson Group, do we continue to explore the current use as a food cart pod on that property? Or does council have interest to explore alternative uses on that property? I think, I think if we, you know, talk about exploring continuation of the current use with the Johnson Group, there's kind of two pathways within that. I think it's just some options and some ability to have conversations with the Johnson Group on what, what actions could be taken and what, what tools might need to be used. But currently, the management agreement with, with Johnson Group allows for them to assign their lease with the city approval to an entity they're choosing or one that we agree to. So they can assign their right to manage a food cart pod to someone else as long as we agree. So that, that option number one of exploring continuation of the current use would require us to work with the Johnson Group and figure out if they would be willing to first essentially assign their, their agreement to someone and then, and then also work with that new entity, a potential entity, to get said assignment. Most likely, in my conversations with Richard, I, there will be, there'll be a need for compensation for the selling of the business to a new entity. And, and the question for the council would be, is there a willingness to provide some assistance there in compensation? Or to potentially pass that on to another, to the new potential entity to have them pay for that? So just keep that in the back of your mind. The other, the other point that we put in on the slide is request for proposal. I don't know that this would necessarily need to be enacted unless the Johnson Group didn't want to move forward with an assignment and they instead really just wanted to work with the city directly. And so that would require us to potentially find a new, a new potential property manager and then work to create an agreement before that the term expires in November. Solicitation would take around 46 months roughly. And compensation would still probably need, be needed because of any kind of transition from the business entity that is Johnson Group to any other new entity would require likely some, some kind of compensation. Mayor?
So I guess I wanted to ask about that. So, I mean, obviously, there are things there now that Johnson Group pays for porta-potties and water, I mean, yeah. But a lot of the, the city paid for a water, a gray water disposal system a few years ago.
Yep, yes.
The city growls the lot, the city, I mean, so if, if it were to close and we would do a new RFP, what would there be that Johnson Group would reasonably expect compensation for?
If we wanted it to be seamless and to keep all the existing vendors on site, that's, that's where the compensation would be for. Yeah, if we wanted, if we were fine allowing that termination of that agreement to expire and then start from a clean slate, that's also, that's also an option as well. But we just have to, in that case, you'd have to be okay with allowing kind of the, letting go of that property for a moment and then allowing it to come back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or should I do you know with the other, the other?
I have a question.
Yeah.
In the event that the business were to, or this lot were to cease and then come back in the event that, like, the existing cart owners are watching this, what's the cost, what's the estimated cost that would be incurred by the individual cart owners to have to move out as the property closes?
Yeah.
And then move back in if there's a new entity?
I'm not sure what that cost would be.
It's not all the carts are, you know, towable, right? I mean, they're all technically towable, but they're not self-propelled.
They don't, they don't have an engine, yeah, not, not all of them have an engine, yes, correct. I'm not sure what the cost would be to, to each of them to move and to relocate and come back potentially, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, not sure.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Yep. The other option would be to explore alternative uses, and this is if council would be, is interested in, in having the property turned into something else. This reminded that back in 2016, when the city was first exploring this idea, it was always meant to be a temporary use. The initial term for that lease was two years, so it was kind of seen as like a two-year place-making, economic activity generating use. It was partly due to some staff turnover and COVID then in 2020 that, you know, we kind of kept the can down the road, so to speak, to, to keep it going, and it was obviously doing its thing. You know, hats off to, to the Johnson Group for keeping it going during some rough times. But with that said, if, if there was another use that is more interesting to the council or even selling, as it was noted in the, in the staff report, that's also something we could entertain. But that would obviously require a different pathway, a different, a different direction. And that would also allow us to give good notification to the vendors as well as Richard that we were exploring other options. So that's currently what staff sees as kind of the two pathways. In the first one, exploring continuation of the current. In the first one, exploring continuation of the current use, there's kind of two tools. And I would suggest that we start with just talking to, to Richard of the Johnson Group about assigning the agreement and what that would look like, getting a sense of what compensation would look like. And then if we would move to an RFP scenario, if it was warranted and required. But that would only be if, again, the council wanted to continue with some kind of seamless result here. And my second question in that would be, is there any, would there be any scenario or desire or ability or willingness for the city to contribute any kind of funds towards compensation for the businesses and the vendor, the vendors with the Johnson Group? If, if we were to go down that first explore continuation of that current use. And I only mention that because, no, we don't have to. But if there is other types of groups that would be interested in forming, I don't know that they would have like the current vendors down there right now, right? We've talked, there's been some talk about a co-op or some kind of group, group movement. If they could create some kind of institute, actually be a legal institute to, to manage, then I don't know that they would have the means to provide some funds to provide that compensation. So that's why I mentioned if the willingness is there or not.
You've said some funds a few times. How much do you anticipate, like ballpark, what are you talking about?
No good sense. Five to 20 would be my guess.
20,000?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor, closer body?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, maybe, I think you already figured out the number though. It sounds like a range at least, because I would say whatever he may be asking for minus what the city has put in. Because the city has invested, majority of the work that's been done there has been by us, by the city. But I, I, I would like to see us start with option one, because the last thing you want to do is displace any of those food carts. Just like Counselor Stavon Jordan mentioned, the cost, it's not just the cost to move it. Like they're going to lose revenue. And that's if they even want to stay. So, I mean, those carts have become a part of the community now. They've, they've been down there. They've been around for a long time. They're business owners. They're small business owners. They're BIPOC business owners, they're women-owned, they're veteran-owned. So yeah, I think we exhausted all the options before we even think about any just sort of converting it back to its original use.
Thank you.
Other comments?
So, I appreciate what, what Counselor, the person body talked about in allowing some continuity for, you know, people who have invested in, in the, in the city. At the same time, I, you know, when, when I think about the explore alternative uses, letting it revert to what it was, it was really nothing, was it? I mean, what, what, I mean?
Construction staging area.
Yeah. So I, I, you know, I, I thought about this and, and everything like that. And I just don't know what an alternative use for that, you know, post this damn lot is. So.
There were some designs, there were some designs done before.
Your staff were, actually I included a, a photo from the 2016, I think, South Downtown.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I personally think in the long run, I still would like to see an alternative use there. I think that's, but you don't think now is the time. So I am interested in exploring the continuation of the current use. But I think with the dam going, Coho Point hopefully coming on, the renovations have started across the street at the new property owned by Desable. I think, I think that plus we now also have a more pervasive height regulation in downtown than we did back in 2016, when it could only have been three stories. I, I think there's potential and I would not want to give up, I would not want to sign into a 10-year lease for it. But I also recognize that there's a lot of contingent things going on at the south end of downtown. And it might not be the time for staff to be putting a lot of effort into that.
Appreciate that, Mayor.
I would tend to echo what you're hearing here. I think that the first attempt that we should be, be doing is to find continuity for the folks there. I think the challenge that I see is it will be, while we're relying on kind of like the third-party space to create what I see as a really great business incubation program in the city of Milwaukee, having these food carts that are relatively more affordable than other food carts in the region and provide, I think, the foundation for running the best max ops on the whole transit system. I think that while that exists now, it's so reliant on owner who's willing to use that use, the market conditions, that we're seeing this now that is kind of not a guarantee. And so I think what I would love to see with this site as we go forward is thinking about what would it look like to redevelop that site along the lines of the South Downtown plans to create some type of the business incubation space that could then house the food carts, provide housing and create a station that people talked about back when this was first coming in. Is the time ready for that now? No. But I do, I'm going to throw this bomb out there. I think when we think about our two of these sites that we have here in Milwaukee, I think that triangle lot is much better than the Harrison main lot in terms of like where we can see a project fits into where we want our downtown to grow and how it grows. And I think if option one doesn't pan out and we aren't able to get something arranged, I would really be curious about talking to Metro, seeing if they would be willing to pivot their conversations for Harrison main to do something in this triangle lot that would create the housing that they want to see new transit while also creating a business incubation space that we could then hopefully continue the spirit and hopefully house some of the former tenants of food car pod if that goes along.
If you create a room for some food carts in business incubation space, I mean, the amount of housing you would get in there would not be a lot of housing. I mean, even maximizing floors, right? I don't, I, I mean, I'm just saying, I, I mean, I like the way you think, but I, I'm not sure Metro would be that interested because of the, the quantity of housing that would be an issue, but you never know, I guess. Counselor, do you want to chime in?
I think it makes sense to talk about what a continuation of the food cart pod would look like. I think that respects the carts that work really hard to be there, to stay there and, and probably don't have a big slush fund to move around multiple times. So, you know, without knowing what the compensation looks like, it's hard to say, yes, let's move in that direction. And so hopefully the Johnson Group respects that and comes to the table with the same intent. And, and I think it's hard to think about stepping away from a business that you've built. It's probably hard to try and quantify what that looks like to try to sell to another entity. And it's even more different, difficult, I think, when the city's the third wheel. So, not saying I'm volunteering to be at that table, but I'm, I'm grateful that we have capacity or at least that the staff is willing to think about capacity to be in that conversation. So I think that sounds like a good short-term solution. That being said, short-term is going to have to be enough, enough time to make it worth it to another entity. They, I don't think that we would have a lot of people responding to that opportunity if we knew that it would be like a one-year or a two-year extension on an investment that they're making. So those are just some of my thoughts, but I think I'm okay with option number one.
And you asked us the question about, you know, would we be willing to help defray the cost? I think, could that be paid from URA funds? It seems like it's not so different from what we're doing with our downtown storefront grants. It's not brick and mortar, but it's, you know, it's in this, you know, it seems conceptually, yeah, redevelopment.
There's a nexus there, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, I think your, your head is headed down the right, right path, Mayor.
Okay. Counsel President?
Well, it was to ask the question to staff, where would we find the money? And I was going to ask about the right question, answer.
Consensus? Do you feel like you have what you don't?
I feel like I have consensus. I would love to know honestly, going to conversations, if there's a, and, and look, the Johnson Group is no doubt watching right now. But if, I would love to know a sense, and maybe, I don't know, I would like to ask, what's the, where are we in the potential compensation willingness or what are we willing to do and what are we willing not to do? That really helps just get us to the faster solution and answer.
I think, I mean, I think it's difficult to give that kind of a range without an initial discussion about what the value, valuation of, you know, the stage of the business looks like to the group. I, I would feel more comfortable with them starting the conversation around what that range looks like. And then because it's a real estate decision, we would move into executive session and give kind of a ballpark of what feels comfortable within the negotiations. Does that help?
Does, I actually don't know.
Your brow is telling me no.
Yeah, I'm just not sure it's a real estate transaction. That's the, that's my only question. It's a lease. I don't know if it falls under that.
It's, it's a lease, but we're not technically, it, it just depends how we structure it. We'll have to talk about it and see how we can deal with it. It's a lease and lease interests are allowed to be discussed in executive session, but we're not actually purchasing the lease or leasing to anybody. We're not involved in that transaction. So we'll just have to figure out how to structure it.
And I'm fine having the public conversation, but after we have an idea of what the Johnson Group feels is the appropriate starting point from their perspective.
I do.
And I would like to move into that conversation with, with a quantification of what we've made in terms of improvements and accommodations to the property.
Makes sense to me.
That makes great sense to me. Other comments?
I'm with her.
Okay, I'm not seeing any dissent from that. So I think we're.
I have my marching orders.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Okay. All right, now we have a public hearing to wrap up. The continued hearing on the Affordable Housing Code incentives is called to order. The purpose of this hearing is for council to take the second roll call vote on the proposed ordinance. At the August 19th hearing, council voted to approve the ordinance by a vote of three to two. Because that vote was not unanimous, per the Milwaukee Municipal Code, the second reading of the ordinance title and final roll call vote is required, is required to occur at a separate meeting. Council will now proceed to the second and final vote on this ordinance. Ms. Sager, would you read the ordinance one time, two times? One time.
First reading was done at the last meeting.
Okay. One time by title only.
Absolutely. An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending Milwaukee Municipal Code Title 19, zoning ordinance for the purpose of providing code-based incentives for the development of affordable housing. Primary file number ZA 2025003.
And Mr. Stauffer, would you please poll the council?
Council President Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Stavon Jordan?
Aye.
Counselor, closer body?
Aye.
Counselor Massey?
Nay.
Mayor Beatty?
Nay.
Motion carried three to two, ordinance 2256.
Okay, that's it? No other, okay. Then we move on to, Mayor didn't, Mayor didn't have to say a word. Quarterly budget adjustments resolution. The public hearing on the proposed budget, oh, let me get, yeah, let me let staff come to the table. Matthew Deans, our Assistant Finance Director. Public hearing on the proposed budget adjustments is called to order. The purpose of this hearing is to hear the staff report, take public comments, deliberate and consider approving the proposed budget adjustments. Does any council member wish to announce actual or potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none, I will turn it over to Mr. Deans.
Matt, you want to take it away?
Oh, was it supposed to be you?
You know, I've been out for a week and Matt and I didn't really talk. So I can, whatever you need me to do, Matt, I'm here to do.
Okay. Did you want to discuss the purpose of it?
I can kind of talk, yeah, talk about the purpose of it. You can talk about the, the mechanics. So council, we, we did briefly touch on this at our budget committee meeting. But if you recall, on, on August 11th, that was a big night. There was a lot packed in there. So it's kind of in the middle of a, of a very meaty presentation. This is, again, another adjustment related to a topic we've, we've been daylighting I feel like since our adoption of our last budget, which is the building department and building, or building division and building fund. We are pleased that the development workload in this city continues to surpass expectations. The number of inspections, the number of plan, plan reviews, permits, et cetera, it continues to grow, which is wonderful. And our hardworking, but small team can do the best they can to process that. But we continue to need to outsource a lot of that work to contractors just to meet demand and meet the turnaround times that are mandated by the state. So you've already, through adjustments, approved the hiring of an additional building inspector. That person's on board and doing great work. And we're still outsourcing a lot of work to our company because it just keeps coming in. You also know that we did a recent organizational assessment. Through that, we identified a few needs in the, the building division, which is now retitled the Development Services Division. It incorporates a couple of our, or three of our engineering staff that work on private development. We also are moving the work of erosion control permitting an inspection over to this division. So because of those things, we are asking for a budget adjustment that would enable us to hire an additional inspector, plans examiner and a development coordinator position. So this, we have the budget to do this via the contingency in the building fund. I'll let Matt talk a little bit about again, the mechanics of how we're doing this adjustment. We, we will max out the contingency of our, our this year's budget, but the building fund continues to be very healthy, exceeding our revenue projections. And frankly, we need to spend it down. So this would allow for us to hire two additional FTEs for the Development Services Division. And Matt, do you want to talk a little bit about why we had to post this one in the paper and the process here?
Sure. So this budget adjustment, we're moving the remaining amount in contingency, which was $430,000 into the building department line item budget so that it can actually be spent. And movement of contingency is a very common budget adjustment. And this, in this case, it did require a supplemental budget, which means we were required to advertise in the, in the newspaper. And that is, whether you have to do a supplemental budget is determined, there's percentage calculation, looking at the total amount that you're moving out of contingency in relation to the total budget in the building fund as a whole. And it exceeded a 15% threshold that required us to, to do that. That's about it, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Deans? Have we received any correspondence on the topic?
We have not.
Okay. Does anyone wish to comment on the proposed budget adjustments? We've got some people in the audience. Nobody's raising a hand to comment. Mr. Stauffer, anybody online? Okay, so I will forego the rest of that script about public testimony. Since there was no testimony, there doesn't need to be any staff response. Last opportunity for questions from council. Any questions? Going, going, gone. Okay.
Actually, yeah, is that a state requirement, the 15% threshold? Is that, is that something in our?
No, it's a state requirement in Oregon, local budget minimums.
If there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment part of the hearing.
Oh.
One of.
I was actually waiting, I was waiting for somebody.
We've moved close the public comment portion of the proposed budget adjustments hearing.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public comment part of the proposed budget adjustments hearing. It's been moved and seconded to close the public comment part of the proposed budget adjustments hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? None heard? The public comment part of the hearing is closed. Is there any council discussion? Is council ready to vote? I guess, um, I will just say it's nice to, uh, have the, you know, the balance keep going in the building division and we do have some big projects like the next phase of Hillside coming in and hopefully Coho Point, um, but at some point it's gonna slow down too. Um, okay. Uh, is council ready to vote? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I got it this time. I move to approve the resolution authorizing a supplemental budget for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biennium.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution authorizing supplemental budget for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biennium. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? The passing of the man was made.
And nice job, Matt. I think that was Matt's first time, like being up here passing a thing. Good job, Matt.
It's beginner's luck.
You passed a thing, Matt.
It's beginner's luck, man.
Okay. Now we're gonna do the council reports. We did some council reports, uh, during the work session. I do have some additional council reports, but, uh, open it up for anybody else who does? No? They're all, okay.
Just have a quick, yes, a quick thanks to all of the community organizers that are out there putting together amazing events this summer. It's been incredible. I haven't had an opportunity to make to all of them, but man, there's been some happy faces around Milwaukee this summer, so thank you. Um, looking forward to your first Friday coming up this coming week and, um, and on into winter, which I think folks are almost ready for. Almost ready for sweater weather?
Hmm, I am not ready for sweater weather and I was so disappointed that, that, uh, Mike's Drive-In released their pumpkin things before Labor Day, like pumpkin has to come after Labor Day. I would just pick up on what Counselor Stavenger said about the, uh, summer events from the city-sponsored ones like Milwaukee, but especially wanted to call out the Ardenwald and Llewellyn neighborhoods for their concert series because, you know, back ten years ago, the, the amount of money they got, get from, that each of the neighborhoods gets from the city, uh, which is four thousand dollars and it's been pretty constant at that level for like probably twenty years. Um, back then, that paid for their concert, uh, their month of concert nights, you know, paid for the bands, it paid for the, uh, sound equipment. Um, it's not the case anymore and they are having to raise money beyond, uh, what they get from the city and they have stepped up to do that. Um, but I know it's, it's been a struggle and some of whom are really grappling with how they're gonna be able to do it next year because this year insecurity imposed also, uh, some, uh, permit fees on them, so um, I do want to especially appreciate those two neighborhoods for their work, bringing some great music to the community in the month of August.
Here, here, and just to give more, Matt more credit, um, my finance team was great. We, we were able to increase their stipend, um, after the N C P R D permit fee increase, so they all got an additional four hundred dollars, um, to, to fray those costs because we agreed those were not costs we were intending for our N D As to have, so thank you finance for helping me that happen.
Absolutely. Okay, all right, um, we've had a few late nights, um, and so I haven't gotten to all of my, uh, uh, council reports before, and so I'm going back a little bit in the time machine, uh, to, um, first off to the, uh, uh, the C four retreat, which the council president and I both, um, attended. Um, there was a, uh, there was a presentation by, uh, Mary Rumbaugh, who came here and spoke to us recently about the, uh, stabilization center, but she gave some statistics on, uh, the extent that people are struggling in the community that I thought were interesting and worth sharing. Um, because they're a little different than what we've heard, um, and it, and also, it also sort of, uh, it came in the framework of a discussion about the, uh, Metro Supportive Housing Services or S H S measure. Um, and so I just wanted to share a few key, key statistics and things that she shared. Um, one of them, comparing twenty twenty five to twenty twenty three in Clackamas County, the, uh, number of unsheltered people has gone up. But the number of people, um, uh, who are the chronic homeless has gone down. So they have had some success in getting some of the chronic homeless into, uh, shelter. Um, Clackamas County, uh, twenty point five percent of the houseless are over age sixty five. Twenty point five percent, um, said that at the average, uh, someone who receives a social security check that typically seventy four percent of their monthly social security check goes to government. Um, and then, uh, the other thing that we don't think of because we're firmly within the U G B, but actually the, the houselessness, uh, numbers are higher in rural areas, so twenty four percent of Clackamas County population is outside of the metro U G B. But thirty eight percent of the homeless count is outside the U G B. So I thought those were interesting, um, statistics to share. There was also a discussion the second day that, uh, the council president wasn't there for, but a discussion about, uh, the transit tax, which has been, uh, you know, part of the transportation bill being considered at the Hill, at the legislature this weekend. Um, and, uh, there is some, uh, some tension, I mean, everybody was very, uh, cordial, but there is some tension between TriMet and some of the small transit providers in the outlying areas in Wilsonville and Sandy, et cetera. Um, so I do think there will be ongoing, especially since it looks like there's going to be some more money, but with the sunset in a couple of years, there'll be more conversations about that in the, in the years ahead. I mean, months ahead, probably not years. Uh, I did also want to follow up on N C P R D District Advisory Committee. A lot of the stuff is the same stuff I've reported to you before about the system plan. Actually, next week, the, uh, D A C will be, um, giving views on the system plan, um, so I think the final system plan is probably gonna come out. Or the draft, the final system plan is probably gonna come out tomorrow in the D A C pack. Um, but one piece of thing that I think everybody wanted to know is the, uh, budget cuts to senior services are going forward in January. So they, and there's been no, uh, they found a way apparently to fund them, um, from other resources outside of N C P R D. So they're gonna eliminate Friday's Milwaukee Community Center. They're gonna eliminate the transportation program. They have, um, have found some stop, some other transportation options for some of the people, but it sounds like it won't be as, uh, as robust as it has been, bring the current system that brings people there to have lunch, uh, gets some seniors out of their homes and and get some socialization for them. Uh, and they have eliminated the rec mobile. Um, so they are facing serious budget, uh, cuts, which we, we knew, but I just wanted to make clear that those are still, those are expected to, uh, be out of the budget. Um, okay, so I think that ends my regular council reports, but I wanted to comment on the, um, the code package, not on the code package that was just passed, but on counselor, council president Anderson sent out a email to folks about the, um, I am so happy and proud of the work that had happened on the, um, on the Affordable Housing Code package. And in his email, he said, "Our community is facing an affordability crisis. I am surprised that not everyone on council can acknowledge that and come together to meet the urgency of the moment." I think that is very misleading to people. That implies that that the two members who descended, uh, did not see a need for an incentive package. That was not what either one of us said. Uh, I think we really missed an opportunity to, uh, tweak that package, create a better package that addressed the concerns we heard from, um, from, uh, at the middle housing town hall. Uh, and in fact, it was an opportunity to do the, the, at the middle housing town hall, um, the, um, council president had a, had a five-part, and in his email, he had a five-part recipe for, uh, things he thought should, could address, alleviate some of the concerns about middle housing and one of them was encourage developers to build common space. That is exactly what we could have done more of in this package. Uh, we could have taken a couple more meetings and tweaked that package and had a better. So I really, uh, I really think it's, it is unfortunate that the council president, I think, mischaracterized, uh, the, the position of other counselors on this. Um, there are some other things, uh, that I felt in the email were misleading. Um, but one in particular I want to call out, which is the repeated phrase we hear that middle housing units sell for three hundred thousand dollars less than single family homes on the market. Um, today on Redson, there are seventy eight homes for sale in Milwaukee, some of them middle housing. In fact, the eight unit cottage cluster at, uh, on Olson Street, uh, has been on the market for two months, has not sold any units. But it did, uh, drop the units to three hundred fifty thousand dollars this, in the last week. Um, so, um, maybe they're gonna, maybe they're gonna start moving at three hundred fifty thousand dollars. But that is the cheapest. There's also some, uh, three hundred fifty thousand dollar modular home unit on twenty ninth Avenue. Um, those are the cheapest middle housing options. Most, most, much of the other middle housing is coming in at four hundred thousand and higher, but let's just take three hundred fifty thousand. Redson says our median sales price in July twenty twenty five was five hundred and eleven thousand. One, so that's about a hundred and sixty, sixty one, uh, thousand dollars difference, not three hundred thousand dollars difference. One block away from the, uh, Olson Street Cluster is a home for four hundred thousand dollars that is thirteen hundred square feet on a sixty five hundred square feet lot. Uh, there's a brand new home by Ball Michelle Park for four hundred fifty thousand, that's a thirteen hundred square foot home on a five thousand square foot lot. So these are a hundred thousand more than our best price perceived on middle housing. Um, so I think we need to not mislead people with this perception that middle housing is coming. I mean, it's important. It's great to have another price. It's great to have housing coming in at three hundred fifty thousand. But we need to not mislead people that it's coming in at three hundred thousand less than what our market is for another housing. Um, and then, um, I did want to also address his five-part plan, uh, that for middle housing. His first step was encourage developers to build common space. I'm on board. Let's do that. Uh, his second step was, uh, let's introduce a residential parking permit so that, uh, to alleviate some of the parking concerns. Actually, Milwaukee has had a residential parking permit program since twenty fifteen. It was passed. Uh, it was created in order to, uh, have that option should light rail, uh, parking in the neighborhoods, uh, be an issue and that neighborhoods could opt in. Or not, and it doesn't have to be the whole neighborhood, but blocks, groups of blocks could opt in to a residential parking permit. So we have that ability. It probably needs to be dusted off and revisited, but it is something that we already have. Um, number three on his list was hold developers accountable, which I think everybody's like, yes, hold developers accountable. But his examples, bury power lines, pay S T Cs, follow building codes, all things developers have to do already. Not new, not new requirements, things they have to do already. Uh, legalize commercial stores. That's one of which I probably disagree, but it's a conversation for discussion in the next round of talking about hubs. And building infrastructure, um, something we're doing, we're talking about C I P next week, in fact. Um, I did feel like, uh, throughout the email, there's a lot of the council president taking credit for things that the city is doing, uh, that we collectively are doing, or that had been happening for many years before he was on council. And he had in that build infrastructure, he called out the Harmony Road, um, intersection. And I will say, I'm the one who made sure that got on the T S P attention. I'm the one who made sure it got on the, um, uh, I, I, I'm the one who shared it with by Milwaukee, the bike community here and I, uh, I am also have had conversations with O Don about it, so I, I appreciate this council president, but I feel like, uh, you have to read his emails with a grain of salt. I will just close with that. You're welcome. Oh, okay, sorry, Counselor Stavenger.
Mary, are you open to a couple of questions?
Sure.
Um, I would. This is, I appreciate you, um, taking the time to communicate your concerns and frustrations. Um, I'm wondering, and I hope you don't take this the wrong way. I'm wondering if you spoke to the council president about your concerns with his email or, um, the tone of the email before making your remarks tonight?
I did not. I have talked to him on a few of those topics before, but I didn't talk to him about the email specifically.
Because sitting here, um, listening, uh, it, it brings to mind a few things for me. We've done a lot of work over the last couple of years to build more of a relationship, um, amongst council and rapport to be able to do this work and long meetings and, um, and to work for our community together. Um, and I certainly don't want to speak for the council president. I'm sure if you have remarks, um, you'll make them, but it seems like this could have started with more of a conversation.
If, yeah, I, I mean, I think that's a, that's when I look at it. This was a blast email that went out to a lot of people that implied that I didn't care about affordable housing. And I've done a lot of work over the last ten years in support of affordable housing. So, so I felt the need to respond to that.
Yeah.
In a public forum, just like the email was a public forum.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. And then I hear your frustrations and, um, I can hear it in the way that you're coming across tonight too, and I don't want to diminish that. Um, so please don't hear this that way, um, but I think that I mean, we're, we're almost bordering on retreat conversation about communication and external communication. Um, I think sometimes it's really hard when, um, when someone is very energetic and very optimistic about the work that they have sworn to do. We've all gone through those, those moments. Um, myself included, and it's, it's hard to sometimes speak about the work of, um, the city and the council. Um, and include all of the context. So it seems like, um, this is a good reminder for all of us to make sure that we're recognizing the work of, that has happened in the past. But also I think, um, this was a little, your comments tonight are a little bit of a surprise to me. And I think it might be worth us having a longer conversation, perhaps in retreat, when we spend a lot of dedicated time talking about how we're going to work together and how we're going to communicate with each other and what we, what we, how we like to be communicated with. Um, I think this might be an opportunity for us to continue to grow as a council to, um, to add this to that agenda and use this instance as an opportunity to look back and, um, to add this to that agenda and use this instance as an opportunity to look back and um and everyone can do better.
I agree. I agree. I think that's a good topic, a future conversation. Council, council president.
Well, I'm glad you read my newsletter. Um I have a few things just to respond to here about some of the things that you bring up. Um I'll start with affordable housing package. Um I talked a bit in the mail about how we disagree there, and I do think that there's a difference between talking about caring about affordable housing, taking action to build affordable housing. And I think the difference that I was trying to tease out there is I think I've heard you talk about how you would like to see affordable housing in Milwaukee, but this code was a chance for us to do that. We spent a lot of meeting time to develop this code. Time that you could raise concerns to express on the dais last minute um that you heard for the first time. And I think what I was trying to express in the meeting was um I think you had a real affordability challenge. I think um we need to lean in and see action on there, and I did not see that. The caveat that I'll add is, as I wrote that out, you know, I was thinking about how I wanted to say this, I thought it was also balanced out. The fact that the last meeting, I enjoyed a lot. It was my first, I covered office in emails, my first three two go. And Robert really fun of me during it, smiled, laughed. We like had a lovely time where I disagreed with some of my fellow councillors on a policy issue, something that I care about, I think has real impacts for the future of our city. And the flip side is, I think we got to disagree and interact as a body in a way that felt really productive and important. And so I say that, the email, and I reaffirm that now, because I think that that collaboration as a body is so important in how we go forward. And I think I really do want to say I disagree with you on affordable housing and we go forward. I think that's very clear. Um but I don't think that you're any less or because of the fact that we disagree. I think that I enjoy working with you and even in moments when we disagree and you say, gosh, the council president is going astray here. I think you give it a respectful way, and I just think that. Um on middle housing, I think that we can have a longer conversation here. I think that there is, I I appreciate your work there. And leaning in, I think, let's take Harmony and talk about that really quick. Um the reason I mentioned Harmony there is I worked with Nick Hess and Jacob Sherman to make sure that the Harmony project was on the tier one construction list, was moved up to the tier one construction list. I appreciate that you've been with me for a while and you've worked on a lot of projects. I don't need to take credit for projects, but I am someone who's working to make this city a better place, and I'm happy to share about the work that we're going to make that happen. I'm not claiming credit for Harmony. Nothing's happened on Harmony. No study is actually planned. Um but I think it's important that our residents see what's happening in our T S P, what's happening on middle housing, what's happening in our middle housing code updates, all of these things that I think I was ignoring this one afterwards. I feel like we have an obligation to talk about these things and get more engagement. And I think this newsletter is one of the ways that I see that happening. I include you and all the other things that's on this newsletter, because I think it's also fair to say or see what I'm talking about in the community. I'm not having a secret backing you, people about things. I I want people not only, I I want to start a dialogue in the community about these things. I think that, I can tell that I've observed things there, and I'm sorry for that. And I'm sorry for the stress that must have caused you to list out your ninety ring grievances and bring them to council to meet. I don't think this is an appropriate way to do this, and I think the harms are also as a body like that. I respect that I heard your feelings there. I am really sorry about that. I hope that we can talk more about these things. I am so happy. Call me anytime. We both stay up late at night. You can call me anytime. We can talk about this, and I'm happy to do this. Um I think that there's a lot to figure out how we work together as a body, especially in moments where we disagree. I have seen it a lot in the legislature. It'd be just pretty far less than I do with some of the Republicans who work down in the legislature. Um.
Right there, implying you're a Republican. I mean, you're making all these conclusions.
No, yeah, I can clarify. I was saying that there's a lot less difference between the two of us than there are with me and some Republicans that I work with down in the legislature, and I find them quite charming, people who are fun to work with. You are not a Republican, I'm blind that. Um I find you a charming person, it's fun to work with as well. Um but I really, I think for the sake of us, we can get together as a council, encourage you to fall upon one of those things, can talk about it in retreat. Um because I think that you're fair to that, I critique stuff like how I talk about the work that being as a council and you raised some interesting points. Let's talk about this later. Um we can probably.
Well, and I do, do I agree that you, we shouldn't be able to disagree. It's defined the three two go. We should be able to disagree and not be personal about it. But you kept saying, I hurt your feelings. You didn't hurt my feelings. You impugned my motives. That's a different thing. That's a more serious thing to me. It's not just like uh you hurt my feelings. It's, you said, I don't think affordable housing affordability is important because I wanted to delay it by a month or two. Um so I think I'm just encouraging you to to keep that in mind in your writing. And I do appreciate that you make your emails, um that you share your emails with us. Um but I do think, uh again, your language, I am surprised that not everyone on council can acknowledge that and come together to meet the urgency of the moment today, as opposed to making some tweets. And you, oh, you're just surprised that my comments, the last one you surprised. It was our first conversation, conversation about housing since the middle housing town hall. I don't know why that should be surprising, that the middle housing town hall affected how I thought about that package. And I tried to frame my comments in that way, but I guess maybe they still claim as a surprise. Uh anyway, I am hopeful that we can still work well together. Uh but I uh I, yeah, I don't, I don't like something that creates the impression that I uh that I don't understand that affordable housing is is important for our community. I've spent, I've spent eight, nine years, uh you know, involved in Hillside. Um so anyway, uh if nothing else.
Can we, I mean, a lot has been said just now. Can we just let it sit for a second and see if there's anything else before moving on? I don't, I don't know if anyone else wanted to say anything. I feel like a jerk sitting and, you know, like stepping in between, and I feel like I should have let council president Anderson speak first, but it just was really, it's like a, we've worked really hard to develop a culture of communication um amongst us and this, I don't know, this feels very dissonant to that, but I imagine that um it might be difficult to figure out how best to respond to an email that goes out really widely. So, you know, I just, um I don't know. It just, this doesn't feel like the right way to talk about um frustrations around colleagues' email.
Well, you know, an email is sort of like a pilot call or, you know, other things, other places you speak to the public. Um.
All I will say is that you once wrote a pilot column implying those things to me. I talked to you, you know. I didn't come off the dais. I think that it's important that we have these conversations in a way that gives other people grace and invites kind of that relationship to evolve and prosper. Um. I think that.
But you gave no heads up in this email.
Nor did you give a heads up to me about the pilot. There. I was just trying to. Uh, and it breaks.
Okay. Okay, we will return at eight P M. Okay, we're back on the air. Council, council president and I had a good conversation. I think we have more conversations ahead. But, uh, hopefully we can keep, uh, keep good communications open, uh, and going. Going forward, I do think, um, yeah, I, I think it's okay to disagree. I, I, I think it would be a shame actually if we all agree all the time. So I think it's okay to disagree, uh, and have three, two votes. Um, but I think it's just, you know, how we characterize what comes out of those. Um. And I guess that, is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, um, I think it's okay if we disagree. I appreciate, like, this is an uncomfortable moment. Um, Barbara, she jumped in and her couple appreciate you, like, chiming in and Adam. I appreciate you looking around, having different at all. Um, but no, I will say, I mean, you'd have to be fooled to not say that this is an old moment on the dais, but I still will go home. So great that I get to this word. I'll be in years. So onward to the next agenda.
Thank you. I, I agree. I agree. I think the city of Milwaukee is, uh, well represented by this council. Um, okay, we have, uh, nothing else under council reports. We do have another meeting of the M R C. Uh, this is why everyone is staying around. Okay. Um, so I will, uh, after, I, I was, oh, no, we're not having executive session. After the meeting, council will meet as the Milwaukee redevelopment commission. If you're watching it on Comcast cable channel thirty, YouTube or Zoom. And if you are here in council chambers, you can stay right where you are. The M R C meeting will be on the same channels as the council regular session meeting. I want entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved to adjourn.
Second, yes, I moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those say no. Meeting, the regular session is adjourned. And then I call the Milwaukee redevelopment commission meeting to order. Don't need any resetting or anything. Okay. This meeting is being conducted in person at city hall and video via the conference. Public may participate in this meeting by coming to city hall, joining the Zoom webinar, or watching on the city's YouTube channel or Comcast cable channel thirty in city limits. There may be opportunities for the public to speak during the agenda items. If you would like to address the commission, you may come to city hall. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by emailing ocr@milwaukeeburgen.gov. For those on Zoom, we're submitting a yellow comment card for those at city hall. Uh, I'm not seeing any, wow, I guess I'll finish. So to, to determine if public comment is taken, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox and Zoom participant lists in chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least forty-eight hours before the meeting. Servicios de tradición en español está disponible cuando se es solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de tradición y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos cuarenta y ocho horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información llama a el secretario de la ciudad a cinco cero tres siete ocho seis siete cinco cero dos. Translation services are also available in other languages. Uh, is there any discussion about the June third, twenty twenty-five commission meeting minutes? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the June third, twenty twenty-five redevelopment commission meeting minutes.
Second, to move to second to approve the June third, twenty twenty-five redevelopment commission meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say no. And heard, you guys are approving unanimously. I'll turn it over to our executive director for his quarterly. Shut up.
Thank you, Chair. Joseph Berrio, executive director. Um, I'm gonna be brief. I don't have a ton to share tonight. Uh, the only thing I do want to share is a thank you to the budget committee, um, and our finance director for, basically moving, we reapportioned some funds. This is something I've been banging the drum about for the last several months, uh, needing to re-up the grant program and, um, and move, move monies into, back into the program so we can continue to make investments into our urban renewal area. Um, we have reapportions. Is that the right word? Am I using reap? Do we actually do that here? Or is that more of a state thing? Um, we reapportioned funds from our construction line item, the U R A, because we're not doing as much as we thought was going to happen during this plenary. We moved a million dollars into, um, grant, grant line item as well as, uh, some marketing tourism endeavors as well in the next, uh, all through the rest of this budget year. I'm fully believe that we have at least a million dollars worth of, um, debates going on or that are been waiting for this program to come back to life. Uh, we have some big ones. So I just, uh, just wanted to let the commission know that, uh, the program will be coming back online for the next month or so. And at the same time, we'll also be, um, starting the citywide program with the C E T funds. Uh, so you'll start seeing, it's, it's a bit tricky, but, uh, Sierra and I, Sierra's been doing a great job. We're trying to really make it clear and easy for folks inside the U R A and outside the U R A, what bucket they can go to, what program they're doing. But essentially it'll feel and look the same. Um, but for us, the color of mine would be very different. So I have no other updates.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand that last part.
Uh, the program will look the same whether you're inside or outside of the U R A, the color of money. Just because it'd be urban real dollars or C E T dollars.
Oh, good.
Um, we've been getting a lot of interest from obviously those that have projects currently underway in the U R A and also that quite a few people outside the U R A going, is there any help coming? So. Um, that just, thank you. I, I think it's the right move to continue to make, to invest right now. And I think as we make more and more investments into our downtown and urban rural area, we can, we can pause and take longer times between grants, uh, grant roll out, our grant funding cycles. I just want to say thanks and look forward to more updates. See, see you in management statement.
Thanks. Um, uh, Joseph and his team, I think have done an exceptional job on this. I'm really excited that we get to read up the, the grant program. I just mostly wanted to remind folks that somehow it's September, which means somehow next month is our next economic development goal update. And so I know we had some actions out of the last one related to connecting with U R A grant recipients and kind of checking in, doing maybe some storytelling. So, um, we'll have to discuss that now, but I just think we should, we should coordinate and talk because, uh, that month's gonna go fast and, um, it would be great to, uh, to, um, yeah, get some of those stories captured. Reminder.
Well, I mean, related to that, uh, not the U R A, I guess, but related to the goal, uh, council brass and I do have a meeting set with, uh, CEO of the head of this month and our pardon, Oregon tool, Oregon tool.
That was all of them.
Yeah. Um, so I would, it was good that we were able to get that and we're working on another one in the N M I A. So we may have something to report in the next, uh, next update on that goal.
Great. That's all the updates I have for tonight.
Okay. Uh, any questions for Joseph? Any? Uh, further M R C reports? Okay. Uh, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the commission meeting?
Second, yes, we moved in second to adjourn the commission meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say no. And heard, the commission meeting is adjourned.